Welcome to Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission for the meeting of Thursday, January 17th. I call the meeting to order and invite you to join us in salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
In case of fire, there are two ways to exit the chamber. To my left, you could exit through the council chamber doors, turn left, and walk down a flight of stairs and outside of the building. Or perhaps the best way is to the rear and walk down the stairs and outside the doors. In any case, once you're outside of the building, please walk a safe distance away from the building. Will the secretary please take the roll?
Charles Durin.
Here.
Elizabeth Ballard.
Here.
Peter Falk here, Kathleen Sarno, Lori Longi, Nicholas Fakis, Charles Land.
Here.
Ronald Gregory.
Here.
Ellen Drynan, Dominic Alamo.
Here.
Commissioners Alamo and Gregory will be sitting in for the absent commissioners. Minutes of December 20th.
Please make a motion to approve the December 20th, 2012, for a given meeting.
Motion's made. Second any discussion? Any errors, omissions, corrections? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? 6-0-0.
Make a motion to approve-
I'm sorry, I don't think we have the meetings at January 3rd. We had them by Internet, but we usually don't accept them because some people like hard copies. I'm one that does myself. So, a motion would be ordered to table.
So who-
Unless somebody has them. No, the motions to tables are already seconded. All in favor? It's unanimous. Moving on. Staff reports, director planning.
Good evening. Just a couple of things. Last night was the council chairs meeting. Noted that it was our Director of Development Services Ray Warren's last night meeting. Little smile on his face when he noted that before he retires. So, it was pretty straightforward. Went over a lot of the activities that you already know about, that, you know, the Lego renovations, advanced auto parts warehouse, and all the construction that's happening up and down Roof Lab. I mean, Roof Lab, you got the crack building and that other car quest, I believe, auto parts store coming up that's under construction up there. Also, just a couple of, and I just gave a report on what we were working on, the regulation changes and everything else. A couple of things that are also coming up that I report on, you know, I did talk, I've had a meeting with Allied Rehabilitation Services yesterday with the fire marshal and the building official, and they're getting an application ready to, as you recall, your change of regulations last spring or summer, to allow them to do retail at their 294 Washington Road by site plan approval. So, they're putting together a site plan to make that happen. And you should see an application soon for that. Also, the, I believe you have in your packets, the notice from the zoning board of appeals that the variance is requested by the Thompsonville Fire Department for the proposed firehouse at the corner, at this corner was, were approved, and we will be having an ART, I believe, on the 30th, and expect an application, again, shortly thereafter, probably for acceptance at the first meeting in February and possible hearing on the 21st of February. Yes, I think that works. I've also been talking to Town Fair Tire and have an ART scheduled for next Wednesday. They're proposing to move their operations to another location now.
We had a preliminary discussion-
Right, I believe we had a preliminary discussion. So, they're ready to submit that. So, we should be getting that also fairly soon. Couple of dates, at the council of chairs, Darren Lamore, who's both the chair of ERSC and also the Community Development Corporation, noted and invited everyone to open house on the January 27th. They've, you may have known that they renovated, they purchased and renovated a house that's up for sale at 8 South Street, and they're having an open house from 1 to 4 on Sunday, the 27th. Everyone's invited. It's not just the people who may be interested in purchasing the house, but also just to learn more about their programs.
27th of January?
27th of January on 8 South Street from 1 to 4. And there's a couple of dates that just, also today, I went to a meeting at the Capital Region Council of Governments on, apart from our own little zoning study, CROG is doing a region-wide sustainable land use code project that's going to propose some model regulations on a variety of topics. One is energy conservation, alternate energy, and I just want to note, you know, we had sent them our, we got good, high praise for our solar regulations from the consultant who was from Florida. He said he looked at them, he thought they were really well crafted and commended Town of Enfield for adopting them. So-
Well, we had some good advisors working with us, and I think helping, going out and visiting these places also helped understand what we were doing.
I noted that for the people there. I told them, I said, "What really helped was the field visit and the fact that we had two different energy company people looking at it, just to make sure that what we adopted was workable and something that people might be interested in." So, they're going to come up something in, I think towards the end of summer, with a couple, some recommendations on energy conservation, alternate energy, also on local food systems, which includes stuff, things that we're already working on, like regulations that allow urban fowl animal raising and just best practices kind of things, and also conservation subdivision standards, and also on housing. And the other topic, I believe, would be compact mixed-use development, which we're working on also with our study. So-
Jose, has the council been talking about solar energy for some buildings? Are they ever, did they follow through, or?
I believe so. I've received a couple of calls. I think there's someone that's putting together something for both the sewer treatment plant and, I believe, for the, some parking, some school parking lots, and I believe the, maybe the police department, public safety complex, to, I guess, what I would call carports.
Right, yeah, that's what it was.
So, I know that, I'll find out where that stands, but I did get a couple of phone calls, say maybe a month or a couple of months ago, asking about the regulations. So, I'll find out for you.
Understand. Few of those, most of the public buildings, the roofs aren't strong enough for them.
No, this was like carports.
This was a brand-new structure over an existing, in an existing parking lot to provide, A, it would provide shade for the park, for the cars, and it would be like, you know, I haven't seen the design. I assume it would be like a central spine, and then panels would go off, and the cars would park underneath, and the solar panels would be in front, on top. So, I know that we're working on that, so I assume we're going to get something fairly soon on that. Other, just a couple of more dates, just to give you a reminder, on January 29th, which is a Tuesday, we have a session with the town attorney to go over some, some questions about, some legal questions. And again, if people have questions, please email me so that you can prepare ahead of time, if there's anything that you wanted to cover that we haven't discussed yet. I think there was a couple of issues that brought that up, that we already know about. But if you have anything else, please let me know, and I'll get the town attorney to hopefully prepare for that.
Time on that hasn't been announced?
I believe it's going to be at 7:00.
7:00, okay.
And also, we have tentatively scheduled for, I think, Monday, February 11th, a discussion here in the council chambers regarding where we stand with the plan of conservation development.
Are we going to have anybody from other agencies?
I'm going to invite, I'm going to hopefully get, put it all together tomorrow and send it out.
And make sure they bring their books.
And I'm going to try to get, like I did last time we had one of these, I think, just get that matrix.
Okay, well whichever.
Sort of try to do a little analysis as to which ones have been, we can check off, and then we can sort of guide the discussion towards the ones that haven't even been-
Because the book assigns them to everybody. We should be able, okay.
So, that matrix, I'll get that matrix up.
Well, that will make it easier than, Pete, everybody bringing their book.
Because, you know, we're not going to go over the whole book. We're just hopefully going to go over those few pages that show-
All right.
That are summary of our goals and objectives. And also, today, we had the Cecil Group meet with some citizens in one-on-one in the Thompsonville Room regarding the Thompsonville study, and also met with the Development Services Subcommittee of the Town Council between 4 and 5:15. So, I think, at least my preliminary reports that I got, when I was able to stick my head in there, was that there were some very good discussions, and they were getting a lot of valuable information. So, we'll see what comes out of that. And also, on, I think last time we decided, it was suggested we might want to do a Saturday forum in February for this, public forum, so-
It was both evening. We were going to, we wanted to do two, one on a week, a day evening, because that's what Dominic said worked well for the fire department, and we wanted to try one on a Saturday.
Yeah, we're going to, I'm going to see if we can put together something for Saturday, February 25th, at the Alcorn School, and perhaps, I think there was a suggestion that we may have a dial-a-right bus and maybe get a couple, before the public meeting, get a couple of tours for the people to sort of point out what they liked, what they didn't like. I think they were getting that. The last meeting, a lot of people-
You said Saturday to 25th?
Yeah, but that's tentative right now. There's, I still have to make sure-
I have it on the 23rd.
Oh, the 23rd then, I'm sorry. You're right.
Thanks, all right.
Must have been looking at a different, good call.
Anything from Bill Lee and his subcommittee, because we want, I'd like to get that done. It shouldn't take us this long. It's getting to be like the chickens.
Yeah, I'll try to-
They're slow readers.
I'll try to schedule a meeting with them.
It should, I mean, what you explained to me that they want to do, sounds like we'd take care of them maybe half an hour or less.
I was, I was even hoping that, you know, the town attorney and I could get together, maybe draft something, and just have a discussion rather than-
Either way, I'm sure it wouldn't take too long.
And then have a meeting just to, just to say, make sure that everybody was on-
That's assuming they want to do it at all.
Well, apparently, from what Jose told me, that it's not, it's really, there was just some errors with, between our two documents. Even though they were, one was done by the office, and the other one was done by the town attorney. One was done by the town attorney's office, and the other was the town attorney, and I guess there was conflict somewhere.
I think with the intent, the stated intent was to have a process that would be used after the, you know, after the first attempt through traditional enforcement failed, then we, then we go into the fines. But the way the ordinance was written, it wasn't, that wasn't the case. It could, you could be going both ways at the same time, and if the intent was to have it that way, the council felt that we should actually have that in the ordinance, make it very clear that that was, that's the procedure. And the town attorney pointed out that the way it was written, if you had, you could issue, in theory, issue a cease and desist, issue a fine citation, have two different appeals processes going at the same time, because one was through the fines ordinance, goes through a hearing officer appointed by the manager of the council, and the other one goes through ZBA and the courts, and you could almost have two different courts ruling two different ways on the same violation. So-
We'll work out a, let me know when they're available, and I can get the-
We were trying to make sure that was, that each one was separate, that the fines ordinance would kick in only if it was a second violation or the person had ignored the regular cease and desist.
Substantial violations.
Notice of violation, oh, Paul, you know, the very, the way, the things we set out in our enforcement procedures. So, we're trying to make sure that ordinance will make it clear that it's going to be something that will be utilized.
You know, it's not a question of trying to hit people with fines, only to get compliance when everything else is failing.
Oh, I know. Okay, so, set it up, and I'll try, either be there, or Liz, or they can pick up one of the others.
I believe that's it for me.
Lowie.
Sure, I don't really think of something else.
Lowie. Somebody will be available. Okay.
Got a question for Jose.
Yes, sir.
Last meeting, I mentioned the Red Top Liquors, the fact that the A-frame sign was up, and I drove by there this week, and sure enough, it was up there like 7:30 at night. By the time I got down to the end of the parking lot and drove back, somebody had picked it up, and they were walking back to the store with it. Have you had discussions with them about it?
I believe someone did call them from the office. So, if it's still going up, I'll check and see where those discussions went, but-
Are you coming on writing that?
Huh?
Are you coming on writing that new ordinance?
I think you got it in your packets, didn't you?
Don't recall it.
Well, should have. I apologize if you did.
I thought we were going to have it to vote on.
Well-
Well, no, I-
We'll look at it later, Jose.
Yeah, but I thought I sent it out. If I didn't, I apologize, but it's on the agenda later on for discussion.
Oh, okay.
So, hopefully, hopefully we'll find it in your packets. If not, I did, I did revise it. Well, I'll save it for later.
Yeah, okay.
They got accessory apartments, and I think that's about all we had in there.
It said proposed A-frame regulations.
No, okay. Well, we'll look at it later.
Very, very last page.
We'll get there. Okay, Jose.
I'll double-check.
You mentioned on that, on Ray Warren, and I don't know if a lot of people realize we owe a great deal to that gentleman for the commercial and industrial properties that he brought in here, which of course affects our tax base a great deal. And he's done a great job on public relations for the Town of Enfield by his TV ads that most of us have seen, if you watch our local channel, and also print publications that I've seen that have been mailed out to industries and so forth. And the Town of Enfield has a lot to thank Ray for, for, as I said, our industrial and commercial properties that have been brought in.
I agree. And then, again, if, you know, we're going to have, I'll send a note out. We're going to do, you know, have something here. On his last day, I believe, is February 1st. So, after lunch, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Jose, send that, send that out for us.
Send it out to people.
Thank you.
An opportunity for people to stop by and wish him well.
At this point in the meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions relating to planning and zoning in Enfield from anyone who's present, provided no one may discuss any matter of business at this time that's already elsewhere on this agenda, any matter that's part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending. Is there anyone that would like to address the commission at this point? Anyone like to address the commission? Last call if you'd like to address the commission at this point. Hearing none, moving on to correspondence. Really, there wasn't, there's, on your desk tonight was Capital Region zoning regulations changes in Manchester. There were some in your packet on the city of Hartford, and I noticed Hartford was talking about outdoor advertising signs, which is interesting for Hartford, because they've got them all over the place.
They allow billboards, so they probably-
Well, they have the electronic billboards as well.
They have regulations allowing them in more places.
Yep, I don't know. You have a letter from the office of the town attorney to a local, local outfit. You also have the minutes of the inland wetlands, gives you an idea of what may be coming, or has been happening. And you have, tonight on your table was a decision of the Enfield Zoning Board of Appeals. And Jose, all those, this, these may get lost because they're on our desk and on our file. These are important for the fire department when they come, so they should be reprinted and put in our packets?
Yeah, they'll be part of the exhibit list, so-
I hope so.
You'll get them again in your packets.
Okay, I just hope people didn't think, well, we'd already had them, so.
No, no.
Okay.
Part of the file.
And that's about it for Commissioners for correspondence. Any Commissioners correspondence?
Just one more item, and I think I might let you know. Before, on March 16th, the Connecticut Bar Association's doing its, that little seminar at Wesleyan every other year. And if people want to attend, they need to let me know as soon as possible, so I can, if not, I'll try to order a few books that we can have as a resource. Suspect some of the stuff hasn't changed much from years ago.
Just as a reminder, there's quite a library upstairs, if you're concerned about some items. Just check with Jose or Barbara to see what's up there, because there are pamphlets and booklets and so forth that we have purchased in the past.
But that meeting is particularly interesting, because it tells the changes, the new stuff that's going on, not the-
You got the state's leading land use attorneys going over both, any changes the legislature made in the last two years, plus, there's always court cases that come up that interpret the law.
Yeah. Once you don't win, that you should.
If anybody has, you know, has a Saturday and would like to go, let me know, and I'll, and I'll sign you guys up for it.
Is, okay. Alan likes to usually go. Is he still on vacation?
Believe so, yes.
We've got a couple of days to sign up yet.
Yeah, yeah. Let me know. No, no. They tend to get very heavily attendance, so, you know, a couple of times, they've sold out, but I don't think, I don't think they would have sold out this early.
That's at Wesleyan?
Still two weeks ago, yeah. Still two months to go.
It's at Wesleyan, yeah. They usually hold it there all the time. Problem for me is the parking, and the walking.
Not bad if you get there early.
Yeah, I know. But if you don't-
Yeah, you gotta-
I'll get there early.
Okay, bond releases, none?
I did want to comment on the new bus service that started in town.
That's right.
They've started running that, and I've seen that bus, it runs every hour now. Comes down Elm Street, stops at the senior center, at the malls, and several other places. Stops at both ends of school street in Hazeville, and every hour, they have one.
And during peak hours, they have two going.
Yeah, during peak hours, they have two. I haven't seen too many people on it yet. It goes right by my house.
And it's free during the month of January.
Yeah, and it's free, so.
So, people want to try it?
If anybody wants to give it a shot, it's theirs.
Web page and-
Goes right by your house. You should try it.
Care with the schedule, and it's-
Well, we're talking about it. Wife and I are going to try it.
There you go.
It's gonna, it will, it'll be, there'll be a cost to it after the initial, but for the first few weeks, it's going to be-
Well, for a good percentage of this dios here, it would only be 65 cents, because seniors only pay 65 cents.
It's a good deal in normal circumstances, but this month, it's a great deal.
Right, this, it's really a good deal this month, free.
Can't beat that price.
Relieved Dominic.
They even have signs up with the bus stops now. You can tell where they are if you look around.
Great. If people have questions, feel free to call.
Okay.
Like to see that fly. It would be good to have.
Anything else? Okay, moving on. Bond releases, none. Public hearing, secretary, please take the, read the legal notice and take the royal call, please.
Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings on Thursday, January 17th, 2013, beginning at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following. Public hearing 2773, special permit for converting a single-family home into a two-family house at Pembroke Road in R-33 District Map 68, Lot 88, Lilly's LLC applicant slash owner. His plans were on file at the Town Hall, the planning office, and this notice was published in the Journal Inquirer on January 5th, 2013, and January 10th, 2013. Royal call, Charles Durin.
Here.
Elizabeth Ballard.
Here.
Peter Falk here, Kathleen Sarny, Sarno, Lori Longi, Nicholas Fakis.
Here.
Charles Land.
Here.
Ronald Gregory.
Here.
Ellen Drynan, Dominic Alamo.
Here.
You've got seven.
Commissioner Alamo and Drynan, I'm sorry, Commissioner Alamo and Gregory will be sitting in for the absent commissioners. Applicants here already. If you will present the, to us, and then your name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening. Lori Longi, manager for Lilly's LLC, 1427 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut. I am here tonight to request a special permit for a single-family house to be converted into a multifamily house on Pembroke Road. The area Pembroke Road is, the property is basically across the street from the Twin Rinks and the Crossroads Apartments. And then, of course, the John F. Kennedy Junior High School is just down the street. To the west of this property is a duplex property next to me, and then there's residential behind and alongside of me. The property is, the house is a colonial house. A little history about the house was, originally, it was on the other side of the street, and when they sold the property off to the Twin Rinks and to the Crossroads Apartment, they actually took the house and moved it across the street. And a farmer had owned it for many years, and then he split off separate parcels, some parcels in the back, and the property is roughly an acre. And there's a 2,000, like, square foot barn, half a part of it is a garage, a two-car garage. And so, what I'm looking to do is take one part of, and I think you have exhibit five, one part of the house, and just make a one-bedroom, like, one-floor apartment, and then divide the other two-side, the two-story part of the house into a two-bedroom apartment. And it meets all of the zoning regulations for the density, parking, the square footage, and it has to have on a budding property that is a multifamily, which this does have on a butter. It's a multi.
Jose, this part that you just passed out, is this similar, it's a little bit different than exhibit five?
Yeah, the difference was, is it wasn't dated, and I didn't have the signatures on the sketch, so I wanted to resubmit the footprint with the dated version and my signature on it, so it would be properly done.
Okay. Questions from the Commissioner?
I assume that area is serviced by public water and public sewers?
Yes, there's public water and public sewers.
There's no issue with a septic tank in the backyard?
No.
So, you don't need any correspondence from the Health Department or anything?
No, just that the fire department, I'm sorry, the fire department said they'll take care of that at a later date, but it's okay with them now. That's the only communication. The other, other people who will be involved is the Building Department, but we don't have anything from that, so. Could be nothing from, you don't need anything from the police or the engineering, because there's no changing there.
There's nothing on the outside, so.
The, I noticed one thing. On the application, it has a plural for waiver, but it's only on the memo from you, Jose. It says, "Only one waiver we have to do." I'm just-
Well, yeah, I mean, it's a catch-all waiver.
The application has a plural.
Right, but the waiver's a catch-all for-
All right.
It says to waive the full submission requirements, which is plural also, so.
Okay, so, all right. Just wanted to make sure that there wasn't another one.
Nope.
For the applicant, is there a basement on here?
Yes, there is a full basement.
I didn't notice that on the plan.
It should be in- It should be in the, um, I'll tell you what exhibit it is. The one from the town, which is exhibit seven, I think it is.
Six, is it the assessor's card?
It's the assessor's card.
I think it's six.
Oh, okay. But on your drawing where I was looking, because I was looking for the entrance, I don't see any. There's no stairway or outside area that's given.
Yeah, the, um, there's a hatchway on the original footprint, um, and the basement is noted on the assessor's part, the assessor's card, there's a basement.
Okay. Let's see. Now, will there be two furnaces?
Yes.
Then two electric meters?
Yes. Actually, there is multiple right now electrical, because the gentleman that lived there, he was an elderly gentleman, he put an addition on a few years ago, and he was living on that same first floor, and so when he put the addition on, he added another part of electrical service. And, um, so that's what kind of gave me the idea of converting, because there was a lot of it already done.
I just saw one of the, uh, on one of the pictures, I only saw one meter on the outside.
Yeah, there's, there's, the other meter is in the basement, or it's not a separate meter, it's just the other boxes are in the basement. There's two separate utility boxes.
Also separate water?
No, there's just one water service into the house right now.
But that will change, I assume.
Well, either that, or I probably, as landlord, landlord, I would just pay for the water, for the whole entire house.
Oh, that'll work.
Yes, it would.
The water would be included.
Okay, okay, any further questions for the applicant?
No.
Jose, anything before I open the public?
Nothing for me, I think you have the deputy far marco's.
Had a public hearing, isn't it?
Yes.
Got the fourteen.
Plenty of parking, you have parking, uh, in the garage for two cars, or you can park in front of the garage. And, uh, other, else, little, you said additional spots, so. So the parking is no problem. And no further questions, nothing, Jose?
Oh, you have my memo, it's exhibit fifteen in the file.
Okay, so if the applicant then will vacate, now open it for public. Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this application? Please come forward, sir, and the name and the address for the record.
My name is Don Ritteroth, I live at eight A Prior Road, directly behind the house in question. And, uh, I gotta tell you, I'm adamantly against just going to a two-family home. We live in a neighborhood of single-family homes, we've all raised our children there. Property values are good in the area. My concern is, once you start putting two-family, one-bedroom and a two-bedroom, your rent is gonna be on the lower side, and we're probably talking section eight, whatever, but I just, it's not something I want in my neighborhood. And I feel that, uh, you know, if she wants to take and renovate the home into a single-family home, I got no problem with it, but two-family just, uh, is something I'd rather not see there.
Okay, I was just looking for the, uh, things, the area, uh, things, that there are apartments in that area?
My driveway butts to the, uh, west side of that barn.
Okay.
I own approximately thirty-five feet of the land up to the barn, and then I go right around to the back of the house. My front window faces the back of that property.
Okay. Number twelve is already a two-family.
Number twelve is two, I believe, two single-family homes.
Well, it has on the chart here that it's a two-family.
Owner occupied also.
I don't know, I just have, would I go by, okay, thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience like to speak in favor or against?
Hi, my name is Julie Paul, I live at twelve Prior Road, which is the multifamily next to it. Um, just a little bit history, um, the front house was originally the, the farmer lived in the front house, it was an old farmhouse. Um, he then built the house across the street and lived in there. The house is connected to my house, which I live in the back. It's two separate single families connected together, but it is a single family, two houses.
Two single families connected together.
Yeah.
Is that like a, Jose?
Still, I mean, now.
What are two, I, is that like a mother-in-law apartment? For a duplex?
I mean, it's still two-family.
Well, it is, but it's two singles, I mean.
Right, I understand.
No, I understand what you're saying, the two separate families living there.
Yeah.
But it's a, it is a, it's a two-family house, it's either that or it's a duplex.
Well, you call it, it doesn't matter what it's called, it's a two.
Well, yeah, it does.
Well, it is, it is.
Two houses, two single-family houses.
But I've always gotten good tenants up there, because they consider it a single-family house, it's, you know, it's not.
My feelings pretty much reflect Don's feelings, the same thing, having a single house with two renters in it, it's not something I, I want in my neighborhood, you know, but it's two separate houses with one living in one and one living in another. It's like I said, if she wants to do it as a single-family home and rent it, I really don't have a problem with it.
Mr. Chairman, can you please identify yourself as secretary?
I'm sorry, sir.
It was Andrew Paul.
Oh, Andrew Paul, I'm her husband.
Okay, because I was trying to visualize what it was you were describing.
It's better if, you know, if she wants to do a single-family home, no problem.
I can show you.
Multi-family, you know, one big, one small, kind of opposed to that.
Well, what would be the difference if she rented to two married couples living in the same house? Isn't that really what you have? Oh, yes. This is twelve?
Yes.
So it's all one big building?
So, give the front and the back.
Yeah?
Yeah, the front's a cape and the back's a.
Where do they separate the two families?
There is a, there is a connection.
Yeah, there is a breezeway.
There's a breezeway.
Oh.
Let's just look at it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll show it.
Yep, okay.
Anybody else wants to see?
So your description, though, would be similar to she rented that building to two married couples.
Well, I'm just saying the average.
It's just one home, but she wants to, she wants to divide it into one larger rental property and one smaller rental property in the same home, in, within the same.
But that's one building.
Well, not really, well.
Well, it's considered one building, I don't know.
They're attached, it's considered one building, doesn't matter how it's attached.
You're right.
It's like a garage, it's either an attached garage or a separate garage.
The average, average rental area, average rents in the area are approximately thirteen to fourteen hundred dollars. I like to keep the average rents in the area on the high side, you know.
But you're in business, then she would be in business, or anybody that rents anything around you. The apartments across the street are in business, I don't know if you're in competition with them or not, I.
Yeah, that's the way the apartments, yeah, it's not an apartment, it's a home, you know? It sounds like next door is gonna be almost, it's gonna sound to me like an apartment.
But I think all those people in the apartment consider that their home, I, you're getting into verbal semantics here. That's all right, I just.
If it brings it down to property value, I wouldn't want that at all.
I'm sorry.
That's asking her a question.
Well, no, I thank you, because I, it does say that here that it's a two-family, but they do consider it a two-family, what you have.
It's different than what they're trying to do next door, that's the thing, it's not the same.
It's, well.
She's not gonna get twelve hundred bucks for her one little apartment over there, you know?
Uh, money isn't our, isn't where we operate. It's not our concern.
Yeah, well, I'm opposed.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you have a question?
I was gonna ask, that's okay.
No, you can, if you want.
My question is that.
I'm sorry.
So it's listed as a two-family home?
Good evening, my name is Luciana Vargas, and I own, um, the home of fourteen Prior Road. Um, near my neighbors here, I own the home a little over four years, so I'm a new home buyer. And when I was looking for homes, I have two children, one in Enfield High School and one in JFK. That was the most important thing to us. I lived in Hartford for many years, in West Hartford, on two families. What I understand that she wants to do is put a wall in one residence. I was thinking about investing on that property. I went inside, I saw the house. It's a small house, my house is two thousand square feet, and it's two homes, fourteen, it's almost across from it, right on the side. If I was a new home owner coming to my neighborhood right now, I wouldn't buy it. I worked a lot and saved a lot, my husband and I, to move into a neighborhood of single families. Having a duplex right next to my house for the rest of my life really puts a damper in all our plans. You know, I like it that on my neighborhood, I know all my neighbors from one side of the street to another, we all families. I understand right next door to me, they rented. A duplex to me maybe is because English is my second language. It's one room with a wall in the middle, and two families are gonna live in it. Next door's rental, they have their home in the back of the house, and the person that rents from them, she's an elderly lady, I help her, Ms. Ida. The house, it's attached by the garage walls, but she has her own house, they have their house. I wouldn't buy in my neighborhood, I'm concerned that our properties are gonna go down. I already put in twenty thousand dollars into my home, and I'm not even done yet. We wanna do siding, we wanna renew the kitchen.
Have you seen, you talked, had you seen the sketches that she's submitted, or the pictures that she's submitted of?
No, I haven't seen anything, no, I haven't seen anything, all I saw was the siding in front of the home.
They are, they are available for you.
All I saw really was at the beginning, when they started going in with the trucks. You know, there was a lot, I went in the home, there was a lot of mold, there was a lot of asbestos in the walls, everything was taken out. A lot of stuff was put in the back of the property, you know, there was bulldozers there, there was a big hole, a lot of stuff went in. I don't understand these things, you know, it just got to my attention, I'm really opposed of having two families live there, coming in and out. I have children in the neighborhood, I'm planning to have another baby. We paid a little over a quarter of a million dollars for that home, and it's just really disappointing. One-family, everybody rent, I like the one-family neighborhood, because you have to work, you have to have a job. I don't have anything against people in section eight, but we both work, and in order to live where we wanted, we had to work, and we had to save money, and this is where we wanted to live.
I don't know where this section eight came up, but that has, really has nothing to do with this either.
Well, I just think that if you buy a home, if you buy a house, you have to work, you have to have a real income. You can't, you know, depend on the state to take care of you, and we don't, we just worked really hard, went to college.
Well, yeah, but I don't see that a section eight has anything to do with this, there's no section eight application here.
Well, no, but when you have a two-family and one home, that means I'm gonna have new neighbors there every year for the rest of my life. We have a one-family neighborhood, I'm just really against it.
Okay, I thank you very much, is any question, yes, hold on, hold on.
When you bought your home, were you aware of the two-family home that's already existing there?
I was aware of the house next door that has two houses, not a duplex as in one house, if that was the case, I wouldn't buy it then.
Well, it's listed on the town records as a two-family home, but now you were saying how bad this, you went to look at this house, that the applicant's gonna, if it had mold and it was all worn down and torn apart, and if, if they're gonna go in there now and put a lot of money into this and fix it, wouldn't that keep the values of your homes higher than what's there now?
Not if you're renting two little apartments right next door with people coming in and out every year. Every year, we're gonna have new neighbors living next door.
What if there was big apartments, though, would you be?
I would, I would have bought it somewhere else, that's why I didn't buy it.
What I'm saying, you're saying she's putting small apartments, if there were huge apartments, then would you say it's okay?
No, absolutely not, that's a neighborhood that has single-family homes, their homes over, over half a million.
No, I understand, I'm just saying that the first house there is a two-family home. There's already one there, so when the applicant comes in, there's zoning regulations and rules that she has to follow, and she is following them.
If the barn was gonna be an apartment, and the house was gonna be another apartment, that's two families and separate, like it is the house next door. Not one house with two doors with a wall dividing in the middle. We all have our different opinions, I'm here to express mine.
I think there's two separate entrances according to her plans, have you seen the plans?
It's not about the plans, it's about me paying three hundred thousand dollars for a home, and now having different neighbors for the rest of my life. I'm sure you all own your own homes, you would not appreciate that.
My home, I own a four-family home that I live in, so I.
That was your choice, correct?
Yes, absolutely my choice, but, but my point is that you bought a home.
Yes.
In a district that already has a two-family home.
Right, not a duplex.
There's also apartment complexes.
What does it matter at all, it's a duplex?
A wall in between, what, you really don't think, have you ever lived in a duplex?
Absolutely.
I have too, that's a wall dividing the two of you.
Yeah.
They have cement walls. Her living room is not your house.
We're trying to understand why, why you're opposed to it, and I, I think that's why the questions I asked.
But there is gonna be a lot of money poured into this building, so it's not gonna bring the neighborhood down, it would bring the value up, Mr. Chairman.
It should, I was looking for the value as present.
Well, as a new homeowner, I wouldn't wanna buy a house near duplexes, all of a sudden, in my neighborhood, there was a single family, it's a bunch of rent in the beds. You know, it's just really sad and unfortunate.
All right, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor or against?
It's in exhibit six.
Exhibit six. But that's a present evaluation.
Yeah.
Let me find it.
My name is Miguel Benzana, I work, I live at eight Prior Road, and I actually work in my, out of my house. And so the house that Stanley sold is actually in front of me. I can hear the workers right now during my, during the day, doing the stuff, doing demolition. My concern about this is like, if I'm gonna have, um, we live in a really, really quiet neighborhood. The only time I ever hear noise is from, from when these guys are doing the building, and I can understand what they're doing, I don't have a problem with that, but if I'm gonna have two neighbors, two more neighbors in there, it's more likely I'm gonna have people over there who's gonna make noise while I'm actually on my job. And, and you brought up, there's an apartment complex, the apartment complex is behind the Twin Rings, I never hear people from them. It's, it's close, it's, um, and as Selene said before, is that Mike, and one of the concerns I've had is that, that becoming, the plans is that they've been demolished, taking stuff out of the house, and I don't know what they've been putting up. They put stuff behind the house, we don't know what it is, all I know is white, I don't know what it was, and I saw they put stuff in a hole, don't know what it is, I don't know what. Sorry. And the plan, I don't know if that plan's gonna keep on doing that, and what the stuff, the plans include, what they're gonna do for demolishing, what the plans, what they do with stuff to get out of the house.
Well, I think really what the problem is, perhaps you should be made aware of the plans that have been submitted, and that would been your due diligence to check there in the office, or even, even here, is to take a look at them.
The only problem with that is I work during the day, I can't come down, I, I.
Well, they're available online, aren't they, Jose?
The plans themselves are not, but somebody calls and asks for copies, you know, usually scan them and send them in.
So, but.
Online, it said you had to come into the office, if it said that they were available online, and if I could call, then I would have done that.
Well, I.
It's, I don't think it's fair to say that I could have come down here, and then you just say that I could have called.
No, I don't know, that's why.
The website just, it misleads people then.
No, you're helping us, because if there's a problem in communication, because we post the property.
Right.
And we put it online, and we also have two legal notices.
All right.
I'm sorry, because it bothers me sitting up here that you don't know anything that's going on when we spent, you know, the time. I don't know what the answer is.
All right, and then my concern is, like he's saying, is that you think, I disagree that they're actually, this is gonna bring up my, my value of the house. I mean, when Stanley was selling his house and he wasn't doing any, that it went down and down and down, he kept on dropping the price to like less over, I think they bought it for over a hundred thousand dollars, all right? So they, anybody who bought the house, and they were gonna fix it, because when they were selling it, they said it was a total rehab.
Well, I'll tell you, on the assessors which we have in front of us, you have the appraised value of the house, and you also have the land, appraised value of the land. And if, if this would, should happen to be approved, with what's going on and increasing by the looks of the present pictures, and from what the description of the people that have already, uh, given testimony, could only, as Commissioner Alamo said, improve the value of the area.
Improve the value of his house, of that house, not my.
That certainly, whatever's going on there, if there's mold and all this other that was described to us, then the improvement of that property's got to have an effect on you. then the improvement of that property's gotta have an effect on you.
What I'm saying is that if you made it, it was a one-family house and they improved it just to one family, my, my, all the property values are going up. My concern is that the difference between property values being, from ten being a one-family versus a two. I disagree that it's actually gonna make it, I just disagree and that's why I oppose it. I just think that if we just say it was, remained a one-family house, the prop, the increase in property values would be the same. Making it two does not make it more valuable than a one-family house for, for, for the, for the neighborhood. That's just my opinion.
Okay, no, I appreciate it and I, if you could figure out a way that we could get information out to you better, we'd love to hear it.
Well, if, if the set, website said you could download the plans, then I would've downloaded the plans then.
No, they're not the plans, no, he didn't say that.
He said you call in.
Well, but the website did not say you could call in.
Uh, isn't there a procedure also for notification?
I went into the website and, and looked up.
So it's just the agenda, is that what you saw? Because the legal notice was on, wasn't on the website.
The legal notice wasn't on the website.
No, that's in the newspaper.
The, the, the sign in front has a phone number. Did you see the sign in front of the property?
I didn't see the sign, I, I saw the sign, I didn't read the.
Yeah, the, the, the agenda doesn't have any, not a legal notice.
The sign is way, the sign is so close, it's on the person's property. I didn't feel comfortable walking onto the person's property to write down the phone number.
Should've been visible from the street.
The, the phone number?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's not. If you walk onto the property, you know it's.
If it was closer to the front of the property, I would say yes, but it's.
Okay, Jose, I, I thought, uh.
It's above the, it's a tree, it's like twenty feet.
Somebody went out and checked the location of these to make sure they're there. If we're falling down there, they should go, start going back out.
Yeah, the way the legal note, yeah, you probably saw, the agendas get posted online. The legal notice that appears in the paper says, um, that the applications are available for inspection at the Town Hall eight twenty Enfield Street, doesn't give a phone number. The sign up front's supposed to have the phone number. That's why we have the phone number and the signs, people wanna call and ask questions and.
Can you add the, to the legal notice, the phone number?
Yeah, it would be a problem. But the question is.
I don't know, I just.
People don't read the legal notice, they go online and.
I, I know, I, all right.
I mean, we could try, we could try to, we can think of something, I mean, I mean, that's, that's the way it's been since day one.
Anyone else like would speak in favor or against?
We can change.
My name is Charlotte Bernard, I'm living six Prior Road. And really, I really don't in favor to have a two-family house next to my property. And what I see, when I see what they did in the back and dig a hole and we don't know, this house is a hundred something thousand years old. We don't know if it was asbestos in that house first. And, and they take all the debris, dig a hole in the backyard and, and bury that in the backyard. I don't think it's right. We don't know what, what was in, in those walls in that house.
Okay, I.
And, and I saw that.
Did they bury material in the backyard, you said?
Yes. Yes, my dear.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate, did you get, have the name, her name and everything?
If, if they could do something like that, we don't know what, what else they could do.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone like else would like to speak in favor or against the application? The applicant like to, uh, come forward and answer any of the burying or anything? Okay. Jose?
Pardon? No, I was just showing her the, the spelling of the lady's name. There was a question, I'm sorry, that was.
Well, I don't know if there's anything, she didn't wish to, uh, say anything about. Do you know anything about burying anything?
Called the office.
No one's called?
If you give me a number, I will call, because I also saw.
I'm sorry.
Say, there was no complaints filed about burying, and I'm not sure there's any regulations about whether there may be, if there's anything hazardous, there may be some state.
Well, I don't know.
Jurisdiction, we don't have any, any zoning regulations.
No, I know, I realize that, okay.
In the backyard.
Any reason to keep it open?
Does the.
Commissioners?
You wanna talk?
You have your hand up, that you wish to say something again or, or? No, I.
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, no, okay, all right, sorry. Okay, let's see. I'll close public hearing twenty-seven seventy-three. No desire? Yeah, it's closed the hearing, if you wanna move on.
Make a motion to waive the full submission requirements of section nine, point ten, point two because the commission finds that the information is not necessary in order to decide on the application's conformance with these regulations.
Second. Motion's made in seconded discussion. Hearing none, again, uh, commissioners, uh, Laimo and Gregory will be voting for the absent commissioners. This is on the waiver, all in favor of the waiver? Seven zero zero, unanimous.
Make a motion to approve. Public hearing two seven seven three. Special permit for converting a single-family house into a. Thank you. Into a two-family house, a ten Prior Road, in a, in a R thirty-three district, map sixty-eight, lot eighty-eight, Rulli's LLC, applicant slash owner, subject to conformance with the application record referenced plans and the following seven conditions.
That's in Jose's memo dated January ninth, two thousand thirteen. Right.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded discussion.
Yeah.
Again, yes.
You're gonna say the applicant followed all the rules and according to the laws, and we really can't deny it. So, at least I don't see that we can.
Well, you also have in a butter that already has a two-family home. And you have an in-law apartment also, I believe at four Prior Road. And on post office at Crossroads, you have an apartment complex. This is a single-room apartment and a, a two-bedroom apartment that will be allowed here. The, just the improvement from the pictures, I would think would be an improvement to the property. There are entrances with a new front door. Removing windows, they're adding a, a door in place of another, uh, window and there's quite a lot of renovation would be going on there.
I understand the concerns that the neighbors have, but when I looked this over, the first thing I did is I, I went to the computer and found the town assessor's card and it does list that house next door as a two-family home. Now, if it didn't say that, I would tend to say, geez, what are we doing starting? But it's already there and that's just by town records, all the research we can do is just what's on record.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, unanimous, seven zero zero. Thank you very much. Moving on, old business, there is none, new business is none. Well, yeah, and, uh, discussion of accessory apartments. Jose, on accessory apartments.
Hey, I believe this is the version that, that I got back from the, you know, in conjunction with the town attorney.
Okay, I had that notice on.
It incorporates, uh, suggestions I got from the, from the attorney's office. They're up for discussion, if people had a chance to look at it, have any questions or wanted to look into something else or. These have been reviewed by the town attorney.
Well, I just had that at the top of mind, whether they had been. Has, has everybody read these? Now, did he authorize the, let's say down, number three on page one? At the time of application, every two years, was that all right? Because he, I was just thinking of the chickens, he said we couldn't do something on that.
Maybe it's because there's some agricultural regulations, I don't know.
All right.
I, I, I set this down, I got the comments back and I, I revised them accordingly, uh, so.
Well, it looks pretty good, but I'm not a, uh, a real estate person or, or.
And, and we do have.
A renter, a builder.
And I wasn't quite sure, but I just saw that it.
Any comments from any others?
It requires people to be related by blood, marriage or adoption. Some towns don't have that.
Oh, I think that's a.
Yeah, but it's a.
I think that's the best.
It is and it's, but it's, it's tough to, again, it's tough to enforce and. But if you put it on, if you do it by special permit, put it on land records, then people that buy the unit don't have the excuse of saying, well, you know, sometimes things change, like it starts out as an in-law. The in-law either moves away or is no longer there and they start renting it. And then when it's sold, it gets sold as a, as a two-family. And, and then it probably happens for, a person buys it without really realizing it. And then, and then something happens, a complaint comes by and, uh, we, we enforce and they, they're out luck, they're, they basically bought thinking they had a rental income and, and, and by putting it on the land records as a special permit, there'll be no excuses. They'd be on the buyer's attorney if they didn't pick that restriction up.
And I like the removal process and if the person moves out, they've gotta remove the, uh, kitchen equipment from one of the places. It said they could either remove it from the original house or else remove it from the.
But actually, I thought it promoted the pods because if you are building a building, you know, you're gonna have to remove one of the kitchens. But if you like rent or buy a pod, then it's there and then when the use is done, it's gone.
The whole thing, pod is gone, yeah.
Who will be the enforcement person on this, is EEO?
The zoning enforcement officer would be the enforcement, that's what would be part of our zoning regulations.
Do we need that in there?
No.
Because she enforces it on the zoning regulations anyhow.
There's a section on enforcement in the zoning regulations.
All right, if you're, if you're satisfied with this, we can have Jose put it for, uh, advertise it, well, it has to go to CROG first.
They'll have to send it to CROG and then we can schedule a public hearing, uh, has to be at least thirty days to CROG. So, uh, we could probably have it the first meeting in March.
Any reason for any of you don't wish to start the process? Okay, hearing none, then start the process. Good job. Okay, how about poultry regulations?
I met with Kevin Denine, um, a couple of weeks ago. We went over everything that we had discussed and he was going to, um, review it for all the legalities and then get back to us. And I haven't gotten a copy back from him, so I, I guess it's in a pending state at this point.
Jose, would you check, could you check with the?
Just make a note right away.
I'm sorry, anything takes so long and it's just.
I know, and we got people that are being, well, we have a few people at the zoning enforcement officer has been asked.
Laurie, did you see this?
Okay.
Got this from Jose.
Yes, that's what I gave it to Kevin. I'm only giving chickens.
Okay, landscaping standards, Jose, I don't have that, it's not here.
I had it.
You do?
Yeah. I don't know, it was in my packet of half an acre.
Maybe they decided they'd send it to you instead.
It was at the very end, under the.
Under what?
Probably more demanding than a dog.
It was way at the back, under the.
Yeah, but this is the old stuff and I usually keep the new stuff on top.
There should be a new one in there.
Well, maybe she sent it, if I don't go back there, where?
It was in the very end of my packet, under.
This is zoning regulations.
I want you to go next door. I have, I, I have it as lawn maintenance service as a registered home occupation. It looked like this, it was in my packet. I usually am the one that doesn't have it, you have it too. Nick has it.
Lawn maintenance as a registered home, yeah, I got it.
I, 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 I got an envelope.
This is all, the chickens?
And, and mine, it was right after the, um, family.
Yeah, I know, this is where I keep it.
This is his chicken stuff?
Yeah, that's the old chicken stuff. That's all the, that's all the stuff we've received on chickens. So I usually, I ask for stuff to be put on top, after that. Oh, my God. Well, that should go on, see, because this is all the stuff we received that we earned at the partner for strong. It should've gone on top.
All the chicken stuff went first and then.
All right. I didn't even bother looking for it, because I look on top first.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry.
If you want to take, if you have comments now or suggestions or.
I did.
And then if everyone else wants to look at it, we'll just keep it on the agenda.
Okay.
Sure.
I, I thought it was very good and the only thing I thought that should be or possibly should be looked into being added is you talked about commercial vehicle and a trailer technically is not a vehicle. So I didn't, they call it really a vessel or a trailer. So I think that it, that should be limited as well, because it would be like they could have three trailers and one commercial vehicle. So I thought that, that one thing should be looked at.
What would you suggest, I mean?
Well, I only think one. If you're at home, I'm thinking you should be able to have one trailer, whether it be a box trailer or a regular open trailer. But when you're getting into more than one trailer, I think you're getting out of the small-scale size.
One trailer and, and one commercial vehicle, that meets the regulations.
Right.
You do have a separate section on commercial vehicle, I'll check to see if trailers are covered under that, but.
I didn't see it, because I actually looked, because I know a lot of people, you can't have a lawnmower and get it from A to B unless you put it in your back of your pickup truck or you have a little trailer. But what I think that Ginny mentioned in one of her zoning things was then they have a flatbed trailer, they have a box trailer, then they have a leaf trailer. And so, since that wasn't specifically named, I think it would be hard for her to enforce.
Are you looking at it limiting the size of a trailer that can be kept? Just basically the kind that could fit a standard lawnmower with, you know, the accessory rakes and.
Right.
Some of them have two mowers on them, they could be, you know, fifteen feet long.
Yeah, some of them are quite long.
And they still just do lawn maintenance.
Right, it was just that.
In fact, the guy I hired does that, he, he comes with two mowers and he has a blower on there too. They're both rider mowers.
How many people, two people?
Just him, he works alone.
But he has two mowers, okay, just in case.
Well, it depends, if one's.
What's he gonna cut, if he needs a rider?
He needs a backup in case it breaks.
Fifteen-foot trailers?
Is that what those are, those?
I don't, I could check, I mean, I'm sure there, I could go look at catalogs and see what, what the capacity.
Definitely not more than twenty.
All right, fifteen to twenty foot.
Because I think that that's part of the issue. It's not just the commercial vehicle, it's the trailer that pulls. And it's technically not a commercial vehicle, because the plate that will say trailer on it.
So people have Bobcats and, and when it gets beyond lawn maintenance and it becomes a.
Well, that was the whole thing.
And, and, and again, this wasn't my draft, this was just examples of, uh, other jurisdictions. One was from Walnut Creek and one was from, uh, Montgomery County, Maryland, that's, that's.
Well, we're gonna add them to the ones we already have, because, you know.
Just to clarify, I think most of these things came at the end of the home occupation.
Really, all you're doing is delineating between the lawn maintenance and landscaping business.
And, yeah, and a contract.
Bulldozers and all that stuff then.
Right.
Only in, even a limited amount in industrial zones, we don't, we don't allow contracting business. Okay, so if, if, if anybody else says and we can discuss it, maybe, I'll try, I'll try to draft something based on that and the comment and then for you guys, for you guys to react to it the next meeting.
Just have it put it on top of my.
The new stuff on top.
Yeah, new stuff goes on top. Okay, and I also found that I didn't realize I had it also was A-frame sign regulations.
They were in there.
That was in the back too, well, the, okay. Well, okay.
I think we put all the poultry together.
Yeah, but these are pages that we're still expecting some.
So maybe it's time to weed out.
I got mansions that hock at them crossing, cause I'm waiting for them to come in.
They'll be, you can take it out. You're working on it, but it's gonna be a while. They had a hiccup with the EP on some of the weeds.
Oh.
They gotta, they gotta clean up some, some of those endangered weeds.
Okay. Okay, so lawn maintenance you're gonna clean up, and your sign regulations?
Well, yeah, I ran, I ran these again by, by Phil, and he, I guess, ran them by his. And I, for, this is like the iteration after I sent my earlier draft to Phil, and I incorporated his, their comments into them. And I also had, and I think there was some discussion about having two different, two different sections. One that governed as sort of, as of right, you can come in and get a permit for the smaller signs from the zoning officer. If you want a bigger sign, you need to come into the commission. And I, so I, I gave the second, I also added the second one, which is more like what I had written in the first place.
Just quickly going down through them, I really hadn't time to read it. F, A-frame sign must be appropriately secured against movement from the wind. We were talking, we don't wanna see sandbags, can you?
Right.
Sure, I'll see how we can tweak that wording.
Can you, ground hooks or some of the, describe whatever they use?
Minimally visible means, or, I'll come up with some.
By the use of ground hooks, they do have hooks.
Cause the sandbags, I think, are kind of bulky and.
They're gonna have to lift them up, and otherwise they'll leave them out there.
Leave them out there.
They leak and they get.
Right. And then the other thing was, is I noticed that we, it says that they're stored away from view, but should we be specific that they shouldn't be laid down? Cause I think that that's the habit of people, is they just lay them down, cause they think you can't view them. But like you said away, but I don't know if that's specific enough.
How about removed?
Yes, that's perfect.
That's an easy one. You can say it simpler? Less words, the better.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't, I don't wanna mess this up, but recently I saw a sign that was one panel suspended with a spring type device sitting on a platform. The platform had two wheels, so it could be pulled and hauled, almost like a dolly. Now, that's technically not an A-frame, but it is approximately the size we've been talking about, and probably would serve the same purpose. Is that something we would entertain as part of this as well?
Well, that sounds, sounds like a good idea, really, if somebody puts it on a low dolly, a low, low wheel.
Easier to move it and off than to lay it on the ground.
You'd probably make sure they move it.
Do we wanna get rid of the term A-frame? Would it work if it just said temporary signs? And they, they're by two by, two by?
Well, I thought we were talking about two signs. He was talking about small, and then we were also talking A-frames, which are a larger, cause the signs that he uses out there.
They were A-frames too, they were just little, little plastic A-frames.
Yeah, no, he was using the straight, the straights.
The one he had was, no, it was a picture of, it was an A-frame, but it had a handle on the top. He could pick it up and walk.
Okay, oh, all right.
If you think that, that kind of sign's good.
Well, we're thinking about the illegal signs a town uses.
And maybe the bigger signs, we can say allow a bigger, a bigger A-frame, but the smaller signs, maybe you get rid of A-frame and say temporary signs.
Well, you gotta be careful with that, and then you end up with the wire signs, like the campaign signs. And now you got a garbage pit.
Okay.
You're not gonna, tell you, you're not gonna get something that covers.
We're not gonna beat them, no.
That people will come up with for signage, guaranteed. But if.
But the sign Nick was just talking about, would that?
That sounds good, I don't know.
That's not an A-frame sign, right?
Well, he could put an A-frame on wheels, instead of the one piece, he has two piece and put it on wheels.
I know what you're talking about, it's like, it's on a spring and that.
Sign is a sign.
That would be very good, it'd be easy for him to move things in and out, and the wind would sure wouldn't be blowing it too, cause that would add weight to it.
Be a good business for you, Nick, start manufacturing them itself.
It had a, I think it started making them, it had a spring type mounting, so it looked like it swayed a bit with the wind.
Well, yeah, it wouldn't be blown away, it would be, it would be a strong spring.
You could, you could see if he's.
That'd be illegal when he saw it.
Well, I don't think they're designed to move, but I think they're designed so it does, the wind does blow it, they don't blow away, they, they'll give.
It's got some flex to it.
Yeah, so it doesn't break off and go all over the place. I don't think they're designed, there's some that are designed to spin and do all sorts of things in the wind, but I don't think that.
No, no, that was just to give it a little bit of give, not, it's not a mobile sign.
I mean, I know what you wanted, I mean, right now it just says A-frame if you want. You're right, and Peter's right, if you get rid of A-frame, you're gonna have, you're gonna allow any kind of sign as long as it meets that requirement.
I think this was a proposal, and if somebody else wants something different, they should come in and offer that proposal.
Okay, any other problems with this, or, or, I haven't had time to look at it, or what? Could we send, send this off to Craig, or what do you want?
Looks good to me, I know.
Don, what do you think?
Oh, I thought, we're just hoping that if someone has a sign, Nick's talking about, it was a sturdy, sturdy sign.
But then they could bring it in.
It'd become illegal, it's that, it's not an A-frame.
I, I, I think Charlie had a good idea, why don't we go with something that we have, the A-frame?
Could always modify it.
And then modify it if it comes up.
Well, a person comes in and talks.
Let me throw this out, on, on the, in lieu of, why don't we get rid of A-frame there, and that way?
Where is this? Oh, that one.
On the bottom L. If we get rid of A-frame there, then any, any sign would have to come in for the commission. Any other type of sign that met the requirements could then come in for approval. And those, those would be, except those would not be, the, the good thing about the ones up front is that you're gonna be allowed every single day to have, have them, and they're limited. The other A, the ones on the bottom would be limited to certain times of year.
Yeah, it says.
By commission approval.
For one temporary sign. Let's see, wait a minute, though, it doesn't say temporary approval of.
Says the commission may approve an application for one temporary sign not exceeding four feet.
Yeah, but it doesn't say how long temporary is.
Well, it does say that, if you look at the back.
Okay, I haven't had time to read it.
Roman numeral three there.
Seven days.
A sign shall be permitted for no more than five occasions per calendar year.
Oh, that's what we've had before, this is.
Yeah, that's what we had before.
That's the one that the people didn't show up for, yeah.
The one we had before to say, if you want a bigger sign, you can get it, but you have to come in. I think some commission members said they wanted.
That was to save time for somebody that was selling something that was special, like Halloween.
Other's Day flowers.
Other's Day or.
A sales and things like that.
I had one question too.
Yeah.
On B, where it said, A-frame signs shall be located fifty feet from one another, which I thought was good, good spacing, but should we have a maximum amount? Cause if there's two thousand feet of frontage, technically, could the same store, every fifty feet, put up a sign? So I was thinking that possibly we should say no more than four or five per lot, or whatever, at a maximum.
What about, no, you could put in that the, the sign, yeah, the signs would only pertain to one business. I don't know how you'd word that.
I already, I already got that.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lawfully existing business will be, shall be allowed one temporary.
Okay.
Not a little A-frame sign, now.
So that would eliminate.
If, if Phil's Plaza had ten tenants and they had enough frontage, yes, he could.
Okay.
Sorry, but you can only, only one per business, the way it's written.
Okay.
So it does go by, by how much frontage you have, you're allowed more. Obviously, you gotta, and I think that was there, it had it at a hundred, and he said, they think they had suggested fifty feet is the better.
He did, yes. Well, we also were concerned on traffic and where you pick it up on speed on reading.
Right.
I know they have studies on that, as I said, we go way back to the Burma Shave thing, they had them all spaced.
From the property owner.
Right, okay.
So it's up to the property manager to regulate that.
They were fun.
Yeah, the way they're written, I think any given business would only allow, be allowed one sign.
Okay.
If it becomes abused, then we can change it, that's all.
Actually, you could change this before you actually approve it, you could change it right here.
Yeah, you could change it during, after the public hearing.
Yeah, as long as it's not a major change.
Right, if you say, hey, look, we bombed, so people.
Okay, all right.
Go on, D, said sign shall not extend into the right-of-way. Is that like the town right-of-way or the state right-of-way from the public?
Well, that right-of-way line is, is basically a property line, we're not requiring any setbacks, so.
So the sign has to be on the private property?
On the property, can't be on the, can't be on the.
State or town property.
And also, when you go into the wall or whatever, there's an entrance road, that included in, in?
That's their property.
Landowners' right-of-way?
That's their property.
I mean, they have a right-of-way of some kind along their own road.
Right, but that is no property, that's inside their property, so it can go there.
So this is just a public right-of-way.
It's a driveway, it's all one lot, doesn't show up as a, as a separate deed, easement or anything, it's.
Then, then the issue comes up, what are you doing in the winter time? If you look at this particular plaza that came before us, the right-of-way probably goes up between the right-of-way and the parking lot. Of course, when they plow the parking lot, all the snow goes into the.
Well, that's gonna be their problem.
So then there's no place for signs, now you're gonna have them stuck in snowbanks, and it's become really an eyesore. How do you control that?
That's.
It has to be on their property.
Well, could they, could they, we had said that they have to be on the ground? Like they can't be on a bank, or they can't be on, on a snow pile? I mean, literally, maybe that should be specific.
Or in a vehicle.
Right, or on a vehicle. People can be creative.
Well, no, they do park vehicles with signs on it, yeah, and she's been after them for that, the zoning enforcement officer.
Do you wanna have something that must be attached to the ground?
Or they must be on top.
Well, again, F, I could stick in a word there, it says the A-frame must be appropriately secured or attached, secured. I could probably put something attached to the ground and secured against movement from wind.
Yeah.
I mean, if you, if you're concerned about that, I mean, that, that's gonna limit the number, and the times where you can put out signs during the winter, because if there's snow cover, you.
They don't put them out anyway, they aren't gonna climb into a snowbank, I don't think, though.
So.
I don't know.
I mean, we're trying to be helpful, but.
Putting them in the right-of-way is what they're gonna do.
Yeah.
The A-frame must be appropriately.
Placed on the ground.
Must be attached to the ground.
Appropriately anchored.
Should be anchored. Anchored.
All right, that would.
It could be, even with the wheel.
With that, to put something.
They could still hook it.
Yeah, you could still, the A-frame must be anchored to the ground and appropriately secured against movement from the wind.
I mean, we're looking to be helpful, but.
You still have in there no sandbags.
Right, and I'll try to.
How about concrete blocks? Well, no, there are no concrete blocks either, cause they use those. Well, no, you're gonna have to.
I'm just trying to see how to word it, so.
Unsightly materials such as?
Such as concrete, yeah, it must be minimally intrusive.
So, and if they come up with anything else, they also can't use it. Unsightly materials would be up to us, or the agent, the enforcement agent.
That's getting a little.
Well.
Yeah, I know, it, it, it just, vaguer gets tougher just to enforce and.
I know, I know.
We, we were trying to do this to make Ginny's job a little easier. Before we get done, it's gonna be tougher, she's gonna need two people to work for her.
Oh, you can't, as Jose said, you can't beat everybody. You can't write something that's gonna take care of everything.
People are the sign people, that they know how to.
They do.
They, they, they look at every single, word in that sign regulation.
Jose, is that too much of a change, that we can't go, people ready to go with this?
Do you want me to redraft and get it back to you, and see what it's, what it looks like?
Anybody? Do you want them to get it back with us, or start it with some Craig?
I, I have one other thing, are we gonna be concerned with how close to a side yard property line that these signs be located?
We're letting them up against the front property, if you wanna, we don't have any site, typically, though, we don't have.
Well, I, if, if, if you have two businesses.
Free-standing signs, I don't think.
And suppose it's a hundred feet, they could have one sign at one property line, another sign at another property line, and.
I know of a business on Hazard Avenue that Wayne was constantly after, and they were supposed to keep their materials in back of the sidewalk, and if you go by there now, you notice that it's way out front of the sidewalk. And that's, that was for Wayne, a constant problem of having all that material kept in back of the sidewalk. I don't know. And he's also right up against his property line too, so I, I don't know.
Can we regulate freestanding? Step back.
Yep. So I.
But if you want it, I mean, do you regulate?
I think we're gonna, if a neighbor complains, then probably the, the owner will pull it out, I don't know, maybe not.
Mr. Chairman, if we're gonna be dealing with the landlords, I mean, if we just spoke to them and said, don't put it that, I think they would go along with it, I don't think that'd be a problem.
Well, I don't think they want problems with their neighbors either.
Yeah, I don't think that would be a problem.
Again, if you got the guy on South Road that owns that property, he might not care anyways. It doesn't matter what the rules are, he'd do what he wants.
I don't think, does he own that anymore?
Yes.
Oh, he does?
Yes, he leases the whole thing out, but he owns it.
Okay.
Guy from New York.
Okay, well, so you want this back then from Jose?
Sorry.
You want, do the people want this back from Jose, or go and send it to Crog?
I'd send it.
I'm gonna have a clean copy.
Oh, all right, we'll get a clean copy.
Clean copy, then, Jose.
Okay.
Thank you, it's good, we got two, two going. Where are we now? That takes care of that. In-law apartments is all set, so, all right. Anything else? I lost my agenda somewhere.
Applications.
Discuss sign regulations, applications to be received. SPR 1580, change of use from vacant office to personal services, tattoo, parlor, 552 Hazard Avenue. 552 in Skidwick Plaza, or in that area?
That is the liquor store at the end of Taylor Road across the street. They have a Second Florida has offices.
Oh, yes.
They wants to have a.
On the Second Florida.
M and R, liquor?
Yeah, K and R, I don't know what they call now, it used to be M and R, but it's different. KNH, I think, maybe, that's the gospel.
Oh, all right.
But.
Since Margaret retired, they changed her name.
Almost the same.
And just one, one other item that.
So put that on if they're ready for next week?
Right.
Or two weeks.
Actually, we have an extra Thursday, we may have another application, and that, and it may be one of those if you wish. So we only have one item, if I get it in time, I know that there's a leadership program for JFK students, and one of the projects they've been working on is coming up with a sign for JFK, which doesn't have one. Signs over certain square feet for schools have to come before the commission. I think they're almost ready to submit something, so if they submit it, and I look, I think they're gonna stop by the office tomorrow to have me take a look at it, and I'll make sure it meets all the regulations, and if they're ready to go, is it okay if I, if we receive them and act on them in the same evening?
Sure.
So I just have to talk to some students.
I'm gonna have to recuse myself from that, but yes, it'd be good to have them come in.
Okay.
Yeah, right off.
Daughter's, my granddaughter's one of the students.
As soon as, as soon as they're ready.
No, we're not getting paid.
No, I talked, I talked to some of the students on the, on the phone. Right questions, we'll see what they come up with.
Anything further from any commissioner?
Sixth grade.
Chair, I'll have to tell you another motion then.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay.
Sorry.
Interesting evening. Oh, it's gonna get worse Monday.